The meeting is ordered. And I ask that Woolby call, please.
Wool, here.
Bozeman, here.
Disharman, here.
Kohlthausen, here.
Campbell, here.
Lee.
Zawin.
Here.
Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, we will move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our main meeting. Thanks, Karen. Get stuffy in front of us. As we know, we start with our safety minute every month, and first, you need to make sure we have volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and also volunteers who are certified in CPR. If you could raise your hand, please. Great, thank you very much. Our exits are off to my right and to my left, and the AED machine is in our main hallway. I'll start by letting everyone know our current enrollment is 4,469 students, which is a decrease of 59 students since we began school in August. Last year, we added about 15 students during this same time period. We did do our online registration, which just shows a very slight decrease in enrollment at this time, but obviously, we haven't enrolled new students over the summer, and these numbers are very fluid from now until August, so it's hard to make a real solid prediction at this point. Next week, happy to announce that our district's been selected to receive a proclamation from Mayor Artis and the City of Peoria for our academic achievements. We're very proud of our students and our staff for achieving this honor, and as far as I know, this will be the first time we've been able to go down and get recognition from the city. This is following the announcement from U.S. News and Woolbury Court for Dunlap High School being a top high school in the state of Illinois. Now, obviously, this is work of the entire district, and this reflects our staff and our students K-12, so we're very proud of this and hope to have a good-sized crowd there on Tuesday night. The class of 2017 graduated on Sunday with 282 graduates, who also received numerous awards at the end of the school year, but one of the most noticeable was this class had 26 students attend the Sterling Merit banquet last week. Very proud of their achievements, wish them the very best. We also had, I believe, 30 students who had a GPA of 4.0, which is an amazing accomplishment for all of those kids. Last night was our recognition night for Dunlap Middle School, and tomorrow, we will recognize our students from Dunlap Valley. We also highlighted our retirees tonight, and we want to congratulate Mary Nelson, Anna Bailey, Steve Harford, Pat Garst, Debbie Wegner, and Denny Dawson, who was not able to be here tonight. I always say they're the happiest group of people in the district this time of year. You can always find them smiling. Wednesday, of course, is our last day of school, and I want to wish everyone a safe and relaxing summer, and this concludes our superintendent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is now time for public participation. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, and if you could please sign in.
I think we're here.
Okay. Before addressing the board, I would like to remind you of our process. Per Board Policy 2.230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversation during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up responses will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff members, or board members, either named or unnamed, shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaints should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. At this time, anybody who addresses the board, if you could come forward, you've signed in, then each speaker may come to the podium and begin by speaking into the microphone and stating their name and topic they will be addressing. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you because when I go to school board meetings, I usually look on the school list on the website to find out how school board meetings, your district puts everything on your website, so I had already read all of my responsibilities before I had come, so thank you for that. I am a broker in favor with the American Heart Association, and I just wanted to take this opportunity. I passed around two handouts, so I really don't want to take much of your time, but I am the Youth Market Director for the Central Illinois area, and I work with schools doing service learning projects. And I work with about 300 schools in my area, and I am going to different school board meetings just to say thank you. So Dunlap School District, if you look on this page, I kind of highlighted, all you go through and read this, but you had four schools that participated, or elementary schools that participated this year in a service learning project with the American Heart Association. Of those four schools, 2,000 kids were educated on heart health in what we call the Viper Life, which is anti-tobacco, physical activity, healthy diet of fruits and vegetables, reducing sodium in a big one, which is sugar-sweet beverages, really trying to get kids away from sugar-sweet beverages. Of course, there was a fundraising component to that. This year, those four schools raised $28,590. What is great about the American Heart Association and the programs that we provide to schools, we don't just come in and ask you to do fundraising for us. We supply a plethora of resources, lesson plans, full-to-board PACs, all kinds of things. But what we're very proud of is that we give back to schools in U.S. Games, and so the PE teacher in those schools can utilize the gift certificates that they get for U.S. Games to buy equipment for their PE department. And this year, we gave $1,800 to your schools. I just want to highlight, since your schools have been participating with us, which was in the '90s, you have raised a total of $263,503, or $8, I'm sorry. And just in the last five years, we've awarded $7,550 in U.S. Games. I know budgets are tight, so that's really why I wanted to bring some of this information to the board. And mainly, I want to say thank you, and the main thing I want to do is sing the praises of Casey Morrow, Adam Liner, Darren Rankin, and Stephen Carter, all the PE teachers from the schools I work with, very professional staff, very dedicated, very passionate about health education with their students. So you have some great staff, great administration, so I just want to say thank you. My information is on here. If anyone wants to contact me, please feel free to do so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony? Okay. This concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to the information and discussion items. The school activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of April is available in the packet for the board's review. Mr. Bealan is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. Mrs. Beverlin will present information to answer questions regarding the FY '18 tentative budget.
Finally, we've been talking about the budget since about October, so we're finally to the point of approving the tentative budget. So we will, we will get started. This is just some budget facts for the FY '18 budget. We are, we have reached the over $50 million mark for our annual operating budget, and we are at a little over $916 million in equalized assessed value within the district. That was a 5.29% increase over last year, and we have a tax rate for the '17-'18 school year of 4.58%, which is still the lowest in Peoria County, and actually, about 2 tenths of a percent lower than it was last year. Our long-term debt, we are at, we have $63 million outstanding, which is 53% of what we're allowed, so we are actually in much better shape than we were a few years ago as far as that goes. A few years ago, we only had about 25 to 30% left of what we could, what we could bond out, so we are good there. For staff, we have five district-wide administrators, 14 building administrators, four program directors, 304 certified teachers and instructional staff, and 337 non-certified support staff, which is all of our parapros, bus drivers, custodians, everybody that helps throughout the district, food service as well. So this is our tax rate by year. So this just shows 2013, '14, that was before the high school construction Phase II project came on the books for that 4.17, and then we went to the 4.49. Equalized assessed value, as you can see, here's our upside-down bell curve. We are, we are going in the right direction for now, so we have been fortunate the last couple of years, we've had commercial property coming in, so that has helped as far as money coming in, and I always refer to it as free money, because it doesn't come with kids.
Speaking of commercial, sorry to interrupt you, commercial property, notice the Bosch Lawn Facility, there's OSF sign going up there.
Yes.
And it sounds like that will stay on the tax roll.
It should stay on the tax rolls. Yes.
Unity point, and OSF can't get away from each other?
No, they can't.
What's that?
They can't get away from each other.
So the unity point, OSF are going to be right next to each other again?
They're going to battle for property, absolutely. So we are going the right direction, and we still have property coming, commercial property coming on the books for the '18-'19 year, so we should be okay as far as EAV goes going forward for the next couple of years. So the budget process, what we've completed so far, in December, approved the 2016 levy, which is for next school year, and then in January through April, had all of the conversations about enrollment discussions, budget meetings were held with the administrators, with the board, talking about curriculum, programs, changes, additions, courses that were approved last fall, actually. And then, right now, sharing the tentative budget with the board. And then going forward in June, the tentative budget will be up for action, so that we have a budget to start the year with, and then in August, we'll present the final budget after we have the time from the summer to figure out what the state is going to do in our federal grants and things like that, to really put the final details on the final, final details into the numbers. And then in September, we'll actually approve it and submit that budget to the state, and then we start all over again in October. So the budget assumptions that we have for '18 is, it is balanced, and that is if enrollment and numbers hold steady right now, we will actually have more money to put into contingency than what we have set aside in the budget already, because we have all of the growth added in from the personnel that we requested, so that money will be able to go into contingencies. The assumption is that the district will continue to receive GSA at the foundation level that is happening this year, which right now is 100% of general state aid from the state, which equates to about $1.85 million. That the district's EAV does actually grow 5.29%, it will grow 5.29% that everybody pays their taxes, that's the key, that it actually all comes in. And then, we've put in the positions that were needed to accommodate for growth and new programming, new programming.
And so how many positions are not being filled right now of those 13 that we approved?
We haven't added any positions for growth, not for growth.
And so how many is that of the 13?
I'd have to go back, or, I would have, you know what, Karen, I don't want to say off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
I will, I can pull it, though. The budget is projected to be balanced with the assumption of state aid continuing mandated categorical grants being paid at the FY '17 allocated rate, and we really have that set for three. I have it projected that they'll only pay three, so we still have a little bit of cushion in there. Who knows what the state of Illinois will do, but at least they're only 10% of our funding, we're not like everybody else. And then federal funding growing at about 1.5%, which is pretty typical for us. And then, the budget is projected to be sustainable as well, even through 2021, even if after FY '18, we don't get any more revenue. It stays steady going forward for the next three years. We have enough money in our reserves to sustain all of the programming that we're adding for next year, as well as our current programming, while the board and administration has time to make the decisions on how to move forward if, for some reason, the state.
You mean any additional revenue?
I mean any additional revenue, not none at all, but no additional revenue. So like, EAV is...
Right, you're counting on zero.
Yes, zero new. Everything is zero new additional. Thank you.
And under that scenario, what, I mean, if the, it's the worst-case scenario, what do the fund reserves end up being for education fund at the end?
The fund reserves, if we, at the end of the, at the end of 2021, if with no changes, we would have about two months left, so we still aren't down to zero. We would still have some, but we would have, but that would be where we would have to be making, we would have had to have made decisions.
Yeah, we have time to react.
But we've got time to react.
And just going back, is there a foreseeable time when our debt payment goes down? It's so large, you know, what, $5 million a year? And I know you said that we, we can have, we have more that we can borrow, so at some point, does it go down, or they always just reallocate it so you pay off sooner, or what?
It's, it does go down a little bit. We've got another, the 2007 bond that we're going to discuss later will actually come off the books in 2009, in 2020, will come off the books, so that'll drop a little bit of that principal. But the, because of all the growth we've had, the bonds have really been staggered out until about 2030 to try to hold that tax rate steady. But it does go down some, just because, unless we have to build more or something like that, but it should go down.
And then, does that give us more revenue in another fund, or is that a separate fund?
It's a completely separate fund, so our bond money, we have, we levy for what we have to have, the county actually determines that amount.
Okay.
I wish it worked that way. So this is FY '18 at a glance, and up here, it has the FY beginning fund balances and the FY ending fund balances with the revenue and the expenditures in between. I want to clarify on the beginning and ending fund balances, that includes all of the reserves as well as the cash, as well as the money that we're actually going to use to pay for the programming. We actually have, we are actually in the black in all funds except for construction, so construction is just in the red because we got the money several years ago, and we're just now expending it, so it looks like it's in the red. But very excited about that, that we are able to maintain those and still increase our fund balances, and the Ed Fund will look even, even better.
And the beginning balance also adds in the first increment in taxes for this year.
Yes. The beginning fund balance has the, the taxes that we received at the end of June that are allocated to pay for FY '18, so it includes the taxes. And this is the number that shows up on our audit. So this table shows, we always talk about months in reserves, and so the months in reserves to foretaxes is what we actually have sitting in savings that is not allocated to be used for next year. That is money that is truly what I would, what I consider our savings and our reserves, and we're at 7.69 months in the Ed Fund, which is exceptional. That's the one that we look to be at least six months in more, if possible, that we've been trying to grow back the last few years. If you include the tax payment in June, we're actually at 13.71%, so we are in good place, we are at a very good place as far as that goes. Operations and maintenance has also increased, will also increase a little bit for this year, we need. We need to continue to build that fund a little bit, but the sales tax money will help relieve some of the pressure from that one. Bonds and interest, it's pretty much a money in, money out, so that's why we are where we're at, and that's why it shows that 5.45 months with taxes. Transportation, it's really good right now, we're at 12.48 before taxes. This has been helpful as far as the fact that the state's not paying a lot in transportation and the mandated categorical, so that's giving us the cushion that we need to keep that cash flowing. And then IMRF, tort fund, we can levy to the extent that we need it. Tort fund, we purposely raised a little bit to kind of build up that reserve, to have a little bit in the reserves, and then fire prevention and safety is what we use to meet our health-life-safety needs, what the ROE identifies, or the architect identifies as work needing to be done. We used it to pay for the boiler repair at the valley earlier in the year, as well as some line breakage here at the high school and the, you know, that's going on right now, so it's come in very handy. Our revenue sources, you'll see, our revenue for next year, actually, we're hitting 90% for local revenue. We've been between 88 and 89%, so it is a local, our reliance on local revenue is actually going up a little bit. State is at 8%, and federal is at 2%.
Why would that be, that it's gone up when our population, I would think, of getting the money from the state and federal will be going up, and our rate went down?
The state's paying less. The federal has maintained about the same, but the state is paying less money, so it, that's where that...
We get more revenue from our commercial and stuff this year, right?
Yes. Yeah. So really, the EAV, because of the EAV going up, it's kind of balanced, and the state paying, not paying as much. And I don't need to repeat all of this, but we are very fortunate, our local tax, when I'm talking about 5.29%, we get 99% of the money we expect from taxes every year, so that's one of the assumptions that we have in there, that we will actually get all of the tax money, so. And then, one of the other things that I have in there is the pension cost shift, and we all know that the, that the cost shift does not happen. What the state of Illinois will do, I don't know, but the nice thing is, is we have, we have the ability to react, to be proactive and react to it without having to be reliant on them. So future programs and initiatives, I think it shows how extremely busy everyone has been this summer curriculum-wise, with the teachers and the administrators and everyone. We've got the one-to-one program coming in, AT-Risk program for DHS, the middle, the expanded middle school explore offerings, reinstating the cooperative education program at the high school, the expanded foreign language operates at the middle school, as well as expanding foreign language to fifth grade, and adding in the AP World History and French 3, pre-AP for the high school, as well as adding the fifth counselor position that was, the counselors were implemented a little slower than what the original plan looked back, I think, in 2013, '14, but we were finally there to having the fifth one and a full-time counselor at all of our elementary schools.
Can I just jump in here real quick?
Absolutely.
So the two items that we talked about last month, the band uniforms and lacrosse, since they're not approved yet, how are they allocated?
Thank you. The, the band uniforms and lacrosse are both in the budget. I have them allocated to a line item, they're not, they're just allocated for undecided funds right now in the 1,500, which is our extracurricular activity line, so that if the board approves band uniforms or lacrosse at any point in time, the money is sitting there for us to be able to pay for it, so we're not, so it's not...
At what level, at what level do you...
We have $50,000 in there total for, for both of them put together.
For both. Was that put in there for just those, or for anything? Because you said undecided, right?
It's undecided. It can be, for, it, it's really up to the board. I have it in there allocated in, so that that $50,000 is sitting in the budget, so that we can spend it if the board approves it, without having to go back and doing a budget amendment. But it can be used, it really can be used for anything, because it's not allocated to anything specific.
By the time the final budget, you may have some more money with, depending on the attendance, right?
Absolutely, depending on what happens with, yes. And that'll be a big telling, tell, the end of July, beginning of August, what we have there for contingencies. Operations and maintenance fund, we, we are adding the new maintenance tech position for the upcoming year, which should be a huge savings, and Tom Grim has been working very hard to get that position up and running and ready to go, and that person will start with us July 1, right?
Yes.
Debt services, our total payments for debt services, what we actually, what the district has that they have to pay is $6,555,000. As far as what we levy for, we only levy about 5.8, a little over 5.8 million. The rest of it comes from the Build America Bond subsidies from the federal government. That was part of one of the special bonds that we got back in 2010, that they helped pay for part of our payments, which is very nice. Transportation, bus purchases for the fleet rotation are in the budget for next year to keep that rotation going, but they are on hold until we know if the state's going to pay at least two of the quarterly transportation grants, so that we make sure that we have the revenue coming in to cover, to cover everything. IMRF Social Security has a surplus for FY '18. The construction fund, we will finish out the DHS Phase II construction money. Really, it should be done this summer with our summer projects, and then the county schools' facility sales tax will start coming in in October. And the estimate was about $1.4 million a year. With the economy right now, we're probably looking at more between $1.1 and $1.2 million is what we'll get in a full 12-month cycle, where everything stands right now. And we will discuss how to spend those funds this fall, once we know what enrollment and everything is done. Working cash is not budgeted to be used for FY '18, which is a huge plus. A few years back, we were using working cash to pay IMRF, so we're in a much better place. And then tort, we have a little bit of a surplus for FY '18, which is what our goal was, to be able to build up some of those reserves, just to have some protection there if anything would come back to the district, as far as tort or insurance changes or anything like that. And then health-life-safety, it is budgeted for the amount that we levy. Our goal is not to use all of that money, but rather be able to use it if we have to for repairs and things that are required.
So if you have an emergency one year, and it causes you to go over, does that mean you can make up for it in the next year, or how does that work?
Yes, because what we have reserved, so we would take, so we would go over, it would look like we had deficit spent, but it would still be coming out of health-life-safety, so we let it sit there to build that pot, so that if we have any major expense that we have to cover, we've got, got that there without having to go into the operations and maintenance fund. So the local indicators that we watch to maintain the budget and to keep it balanced is obviously the local business climate, the economy, local property values, both residential and commercial, what types of development are coming in, how much development's coming in. Property tax appeals is a big one. Every time somebody appeals their taxes, it can mean a loss to the district. Our, we are very lucky, our Peoria County Board of Review is very, very stringent on what they do and do not allow, and works very well with us and the other county schools, but it's always something that we keep a very close eye on from October through December, as ever, and we get mostly the commercial property. We have to be notified for anything over $100,000 in value, so those are the ones that we intervene on and really participate in. And then facility needs and salary agreements. State of Illinois, same thing as always. The budget impasse in Springfield is obviously an issue, not just for schools, but for everybody right now. The property tax freeze legislation, that's part of that. Property tax exemption legislation that's sitting out there is another one. It's for homestead, and, homestead exemptions for elderly veterans, and actually, just everyone who owns their home and lives there. And then general state aid formula changes in legislation and pension reform and cautious. So those are all of the things that we're watching, and honestly, we've been watching them for years, so until they figure it out, it's kind of a guessing game for all of us, but it's what we pay attention to, to see, try to guess what's going to happen. Anybody have any questions?
The money for the hospitals, you know, that lawsuit, when do we find out about that, and where is that, is that money in reserves?
The money for the lawsuit, it would come out, you, the, for...
You know, that, I think it's OSF, a lawsuit on whether or not they have to...
The tax exemption. It's, it's in reserve, so if they, if it would come out, it would decrease our property values, it would be a hit to our equalized assessed value, but we've got the money sitting in reserves to cover the cost if we have to pay back.
Okay, isn't that about ready to be settled?
It's very close to being settled, yeah.
Or determined, or...
Determined, and, yes.
Was the dollar amount to us?
I can't remember.
It's not a ton, it's, because it's just the 91, it's just the 91 property...
And that's not a 100%, is it?
It's not even, no.
I was going to say, it's not a 100% not-for-profit.
No, it's not 100% not-for-part, so that...
Should see.
No. And it's, we've, we have figured out that it's not, and they know that, we know it's not supposed to be.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much, Karen. We know this takes a ton of work, and we really appreciate it. Information regarding this... Information regarding this seventeen eighteen transportation contracts are available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions on the transportation contracts? Okay. Information regarding the new textbooks for twenty seventeen eighteen are available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Bowman is available to answer any questions? Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding revisions to the board policies is available for the board's review. The policy revisions are for information and discussion only at this time. The board will be asked to take action on these policy revisions at the June board meeting. Are there any questions or discussion? Information regarding the sidewalk easement agreement with the Village of Dunlap is available in the packet. Dr. Parker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Information regarding the destruction of closed session audio recordings is available in the packet. Are there any questions on that? Information regarding ISB Joint Annual Conference attendance is available in the packet. The board will need to discuss participation at the ISB Joint Annual Conference. You want to count, do you need any?
We have to make room reservations in June.
Okay. Want to start?
I won't need a reservation.
Okay.
I don't think I'll be going.
Okay.
I will be going.
All right. Okay.
I'll plan to attend, but I don't want a reservation, because I may not be able to go for one day.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be attending.
I'll be going.
Okay.
And I don't know about that.
Okay, we'll check with them. So just rooms for Karen and Abby at this point, right?
Okay. Thank you. Information regarding the ISB resolution process is available in the packet. Does anyone have a resolution to propose to the board? Information regarding future agenda items is in the packet. Are there any new requests for agenda items?
Yes, I have one.
Okay. This one is on the board's use of social media. We can either discuss this now, or I can bring it back next month under future agenda items.
Usually, this is a new process for us, but we bring it back if I need more information, but this was a, this is a board issue, so I don't need more information, but I'll let up to you guys. Do you want me to?
Can you state what it is again?
Sure. Board's use of social media to address the complaint, which was filed by the DEA. This was scheduled to be addressed during the retreat, which has been canceled. Board needs to discuss so we can respond to the complaint.
Right. And my concern is the timeliness, because we postponed it, the discussion. Board members wanted to save it for the retreat, and the retreat was already backed up to May twenty-fourth. So at this point, the complaint's been out there for a while already, and so if the retreat's going to get kicked down the road for another couple months, based on availability, then we probably should address it and have it on the agenda sooner than waiting to meet at that time, so that we can get a response back in a timely manner.
Okay, so do you, do we need a, do we need four people to agree that it should be on the agenda, or what?
I need a consensus from the board on if you want to have this on the agenda or not, as a future agenda item. But this would not necessarily need to be for the retreat. You can certainly discuss this in open session.
Yeah, and I talked about that. Beth was fine having the conversation about a policy in open session.
Do you want a head nod at this point?
We can talk about it. We can have no consensus, or we can take a formal vote next month, either one.
Okay. Does anybody have a preference, or any discussion on this? On whether or not we'd like to talk about it next month?
On the agenda.
So it would be as an information item?
I'm okay with.
When do you anticipate having the board retreat? So Rita's backed up till July, is that correct?
Rita had three or four days in June, but she's available, but the administration is not available.
Oh, okay.
So most of those were the last.
My comment is, if it could be in July or August, I know the social media has been around for quite some time. If we can do it at the retreat, I think that would be most preferable, but I'm not opposed to putting it on the agenda if other people.
Can you tell me again when, when that date was, they brought that to us? Do you have that on your form, Dawn?
I don't think I have the exact date. It was, um.
It's the last fourth of March.
It was, yeah, it was before, it was before the election, so it would have been, um, probably April?
I think it was at least March.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe.
Well, the formal complaint would have been.
Okay, okay. But then, yeah, we'd be discussing it at the meeting.
Right, you're right.
And were they requesting a?
So it's been a while.
A board policy?
I think the DEA was requesting that the board discuss the social media policy and how it relates to board members.
Okay, I mean, I'm fine discussing at the retreat. We, do we think the retreat would be, I don't know if you answered Abby's question, do you think it would be able to be scheduled for July?
I would be shocked if it was able to be scheduled in July, just because everybody's scheduled. I mean, I, we can certainly try. I've not done that with Rita yet, but I'm just waiting on direction from the board.
Okay. So it might be late August, realistically?
I think that's probably very realistic. We can certainly push for it to be earlier, but I, I just don't know with everybody. I would first have to get all of some of your schedules.
Is there a concern about talking about it in open session? I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't? Because we discuss a lot of topics.
We're talking about individuals. I think you have to do it, I would think, at a board retreat, if you're speaking about specific individuals, just like if you're talking about individual personnel, you would do that in closed session.
But I don't think that the DEA was making a complaint just on one person. I think.
I think it'd be more of a general conversation, more practice than a person.
A board member use was how I took that, but I could be wrong.
Do you have a copy of that complaint?
Not.
We all received it individually.
It was an email.
Yeah, but I just, was it a formal complaint, or was this an email, was it not?
They just would like the board to address it, if I recall.
I mean, so it wasn't a complaint, it's the, it's, hey, the board should address this. I mean, I don't remember. I'm just trying to, you don't have copies of this specifically?
No, I didn't know this was coming, so I.
Yeah, and I guess the, to me, the concern is that, you know, we, we were discussing it, and then we were, we asked to wait for the retreat, which I think was fine when we were having a retreat, but if we cancel the retreat and we don't, we're not going to have it, you know, I don't think it's fair to wait four, five months, and especially when we have a social media policy for the personnel and our employees on the, on the docket today for approval. So I think those, you know, those somewhat go hand in hand, and that's why the whole complaint came forward, was because we were having that. So if we're approving that today, then certainly we should be, it should be on the schedule to be addressing the concerns that are on our end, just being responsible and timely.
And is it to establish a policy or just discuss?
Yeah, I guess that's the point.
I guess discuss a policy.
To address the complaint, which was filed by the DEA. Needs to discuss this so we can respond to the complaint.
So I guess it sounds like it was a more formal complaint, or what, other than email, I guess filed than the complaint. I guess I'm trying, I'm curious as to what. My thing is too, from a policy standpoint, wouldn't we want the ISB person to be there to educate us of what other boards may have in place for this stuff, as opposed to just us in an open session? I thought that was the whole purpose of the board retreat, the self-evaluation issue. Am I mistaken?
I think there were a lot of things on it, but I think it was to discuss a social media policy.
Right, and I thought, right.
Because that was the issue that.
With what's going on in the state and other boards and all that stuff, right? Isn't that person supposed to guide us on that stuff?
Rita told me that the social media part was going to be very small in her agenda.
Yeah, but to your point, Brian, we can get guidance. We can get guidance from her, even as we're discussing it. We can have her write-up guidance, or, you know, as I spoke to you two, you know, that's why I think it's so important, we have that kind of stuff locked in, that we follow through as much as possible, and if for some reason that we are able to keep our scheduled date, we should have kept, we should keep our scheduled date, because it is so difficult to get the schedules together, and I know we had a hard time getting on Rita's schedule, so it's not something that just you can pick out of the, you know, sky real easily. Takes time, a long time to schedule that. You may be in three, four months before we get it together again, so if, for some reason we become available, all of this would be for not, because then we could go ahead with the date that we had originally chosen, and have the discussion at the retreat in a timely manner.
But I guess from a process issue, what, if we do it in July, August, what is, it's not going to slow anything down for the district, so why not wait till then? If we can do it then with scheduling the retreat then?
I think the concern is, and has been, we all each individually received the email, that we as a board are implementing a policy to regulate the social media use of the district employees, yet we aren't held to the same standard. So I, I'm not sure, it wasn't a formal complaint, because we'd be in a whole different process with the union on that. We wouldn't be doing it in this manner, but I think the question that they posed is, how can we regulate the employees and implement a policy when we don't have a policy for our board?
First of all, we're not employees of the district, and I, I do understand, as elected officials, we are all held to a higher level of accountability. I have no objection, objection speaking about social media at the board meeting at all. Do you want to talk about the board meeting? Beth's fine with me. If you're looking for guidance from, from someone who worked with other districts, I also agree, it should also be brought up at the retreat, so.
So we can start with us first, and determine whether this is something that we do want to pursue, and have that discussion.
So you need a motion? I mean, how do you?
No, you know, I'll just put this on as a future, as an agenda item, either more than likely in June, and you guys can have a discussion on. I'll copy this and put this in the packet for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think in between, we can, we can actually reach out to Rita and get some of the documentation and refer to, if she has anything that she was going to share with us.
And I'll share the DEA, you know, the information that we received from them, in case you don't have that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, the email was actually, I just pulled it up.
Oh, okay.
It was April thirteenth, so we should all have it somewhere around that time. I think April eleventh.
Okay.
It went to you and you forwarded to us.
All right.
So it was a forwarded email. And I think it's just important with the relationship to going forward. We've done so well, and I think it just continues that trust and responsibility, that we don't let it just fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay. We will now move to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda?
You know, initially, I was going to pull the consent agenda item five, one, two, five, which is that policy for, for their employees of the district, for social media, but since we've kind of had that discussion, unless anybody else has any questions on that, that was my concern, that we're proving that tonight, and we hadn't addressed the, the other end of it, so.
And I guess, I mean, I, I have some reservations about that policy.
Yeah, I, I, I think initially was a no on it, too.
Yeah, that's what I was supposed to.
I mean, my feeling, I guess, is if the union, you know, is okay with it, I mean, I guess I'm okay. I, I did have a.
I'd agree to pull it, just want to pull it.
Let's pull five, one, two, five.
Okay.
Do you, do you still feel that way after the advisement by Jay Greening? He had, had written advisement out the text to district and.
Yeah, so I had just some different questions, and I did talk to him, and so I'm okay with it now, and we changed a little part of it. I mean, I was concerned that every staff member would be required to put a disclaimer on their Facebook, and we changed that, right?
There's, we added three words.
Yeah, so just so it only applies to websites and, I can't remember the term for it, but, you know, it's not, it's not on, on Facebook. They don't put that disclaimer on Facebook. So that was one of my concerns, and, you know, I had some concerns about just the broadness of it, but I think since the union doesn't have those concerns, it affects them, you know, I'm okay with it, so. But did you want to pull it?
Yeah.
We changed policy five, one, thirty-six, not five.
But if you have the votes, if you have the votes to pass, it can pass, right?
Right. On consent agenda?
We would have to pull that policy, but I just, I just want to make sure that if we pull it, we understand we're doing that against the advisement of our legal counsel.
Well, Lisa, if we, to pull it, it wouldn't be to necessarily not approve it. It would just have to be separate, is that correct? Because, I mean, some people may go no on that individual item, as opposed to no on the entire consent agenda. If that's what I'm.
Usually, we make sure if we're going to pull it, that, that you know that you do not have the support to pass it. That's my, I just want to make sure that that's the case here.
I think, I think we have support, but I don't know if you want people to vote no on the entire consent agenda.
No, no, not at all. No.
Is there anybody voting no on the policy? Is there anybody?
On the consent agenda, any of you guys.
Any of you guys on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
So are we gonna?
I think everybody, is everyone going to go for it?
I would probably go no on it, just because I didn't, I don't think, I think it's too broad.
Okay.
The social media.
No, you don't have to pull it, committee, no, absolutely not. Committee.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve, just a consent, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda as part of the May seventeen, twenty seventeen Board of Education.
Okay, Teresa Holshouser moved, has moved, and Cheryl has seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Lou?
Aye.
Folsman?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Post-Houser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Salin?
No.
Okay, the motion carries, and now we'll go through the bill list and treasuries report. They're included in the packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Okay. Ask for a motion to approve payment of bills.
I moved to approve payment of the bill in the amount of two million, nine hundred forty thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents, as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Brian Zouan and seconded by Teresa Holshouser. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Folsman?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Post-Houser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Salin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
District investment report is available in the packet for review. Mr. Nguyen is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
Dave, I just have two questions. The annual, what would be the ninety-day T-bill rate on an annualized basis?
Because I normally, so the ninety-year, three, three months, obviously, and I believe we're.
Point nine?
I'd have to look, I mean, it's not, I'd say it's, I'd have to look at that, half a percent, maybe.
On an annual basis, it wouldn't be up to one percent?
Half a percent, I'm thinking of. On an annual basis, I think, or so, I'd have to take, I, I need to take.
Okay, and then the CD rates, what are the CD rates at?
So.
Like a three-month CD.
The spread between CDs and the T-bills is about twenty basis points.
Okay.
Twenty to twenty-five basis points. In favor of CDs.
Really? Okay. Okay.
Last, last time I checked, so I, I didn't look, I was traveling today, so I didn't have a chance to look at the market, so that's more, because I usually, because of the nature of my job, I give a specific number, since I.
That's, that's fine. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Information regarding the consideration and action on a resolution providing for the issue of four million, eight hundred fifty thousand general obligation refunding school bonds, Series twenty seventeen, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions on this? Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the consideration and action on a resolution providing for the issue of four million, eight hundred fifty thousand general obligation refunding school bonds, Series twenty seventeen, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Is there a motion? Do you have to say it? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I moved to approve the consideration and action on a resolution providing for the issue of four million, eight hundred fifty thousand general obligation refunding school bonds, Series twenty seventeen, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds, and authorizing the sale said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
I'll second it. Okay, this is moved by Cheryl Bluth, seconded by Abby Humble. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please. Fisher?
Aye.
Post-Houser?
Aye.
Humble?
Salin? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Aye.
I thought she was.
Lou?
Aye.
Folsman?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the rejection of bids. I'll ask for a separate motion to reject each bid. Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question. Maybe you can answer this, Karen, maybe you can't, because I'm on the band uniform. Is there a? Library Remodel Project, and authorizes and directs the administration to undertake a revision of the specifications and to rebid the contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Teresa Holshouser, seconded by Cheryl Bluth, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Humble?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharum?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion for the next item, please?
I move to reject all bids received for the cast-in-place concrete at Dunlap High School Library Remodel Project, and authorizes and directs the administration to undertake a revision of the specifications and to rebid the contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Don Bozeman, is there discussion?
A microphone.
Roll call vote, please.
Lou?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharum?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharum?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion carries, is there another motion?
I move to reject all furniture bids received for the Dunlap High School Library Remodel Project at Dunlap High School, and authorize and direct administration to undertake a revision of the specifications and to rebid the contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Don Bozeman, seconded by Teresa Holshouser, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Disharum?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.